Will the, all the men please take their seats? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is April 7th, 2025. We welcome you to the April 7th, 2025 meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Please join me as we salute our flag. Madam Secretary, would you please take the roll?
Alderman Archiola.
Present.
Alderman Beatty.
Present.
Alderman Bevan.
Here.
Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Federico.
Here.
Alderman Fowler.
Here.
Alderman Healy. Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman Marlowe.
Here.
Alderman Mo Renan.
Here.
Alderman Paselli. Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitale. Alderman Wells.
Here.
Fifteen are present.
We have fifteen present. We do have a quorum. Thank you, Madam Secretary. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are strictly limited to the legislative functions of the Board of Aldermen. Please use every effort to limit public speaking to the permissible business of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the Board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Please keep in mind that the structure of our meeting does not allow for a two-way dialogue during public comment or to answer your questions. Residents can contact their district alderman by phone or email regarding any issue or concern you may have. We welcome and appreciate your comments and concerns regarding city business and community matters. And we'll do what we can to considerate, to all, to consideration of all of your questions and matters. Anyone wishing to address the Board can do so at this time. Please, please, please state your name and address when you come up here. Right now, the mayor has a proclamation to read. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening and welcome to City Hall. This is an exciting moment. We are recognizing the Milford Knights' 7th grade basketball team, the girls' team, champions. Congratulations, girls, and their family and their friends are here. And it's my honor and my privilege to present this proclamation to you on a great, successful season. The Milford Knights' 7th grade basketball team comprised of ten young women has brought great honor and pride to themselves, their families, and the community. And the team played an impressive 2024-2025 basketball season. Together, they won Milford's tipping-off tournament in back-to-back seasons, back-to-back. Big round of applause, back-to-back seasons. As well as in the Milford Knights playoffs. Their hard work and determination allowed them to power through a mid-season slump. That speaks volumes, how you endure and you keep fighting, you keep moving, and you overcome adversity. So to come out of a season as a winner and enduring a slump, that speaks a lot to your character. As a team, you should all be very proud. They finished strong with a 4-0 game-winning streak to secure the New England champion in a remarkable overtime win to Seannock, Massachusetts, 33 to 32. That's a great win. That's a tough game. This Milford Knights team came together and played as one, showcasing incredible teamwork and sportsmanship throughout the season. They were an impressive source of knowledge and support for the 4th grade Milford Knights team, serving as season-long mentors. And you mentored your 4th grade team as well. That's remarkable. You should be very proud. Under the direction of head coach Adam D. Young, Adam, say hello. And assistant coach Chris Ayers, Chris, say hello. And team members Riley, Caroline, Lila, Molly, Charlotte, Harper, Paisley, Gabby, Anaya, and Alina. A winning combination was assembled through hard work, dedication, and enthusiasm. And the team played championship basketball as a testament to their own abilities, coaching expertise, and the desire to win. Now therefore, I, Anthony S. Genitasio, Mayor of the City of Milford, Connecticut, by the authority vested in me and on behalf of all the citizens of Milford, do hereby proclaim Monday, today, April 7th, 2025, as Milford Knights' 7th grade basketball team day. And the City of Milford, and extend this expression of our pride in their accomplishments and our appreciation for the fine manner in which they have represented our community. Congratulations, girls. Please come forward to accept your proclamation. Once again, our 7th grade champions, Milford Knights, girls' basketball team. Milford has girl power. Well done, ladies, well done. We're gonna take a picture. Parents, please. Thank you, thank you so much.
Once again, anyone wishing to address the Board can do so at this time. Please state your name and address clearly for the record, for the secretary. Thank you.
Good evening. William Cates. I live at 97 Pomona Avenue in Milford. I just wanted to thank the City of Milford and our mayor for his recent involvement with American Legion Post 196's salute to its veterans on the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. These fellows from 196 worked extremely hard to put that program together. And they put in a lot of hours. And the results was quite, quite excellent. We appreciate all that you've done for us. And from my end of the town, VFW, I am pleased to announce that our Patriot, Patriot Pen Voice of Democracy Essay Contest, we had a young gentleman who was from, actually from Easton. He goes to St. Luke's School. And he submitted an essay which we felt was absolutely outstanding. And we forwarded his essay to the state of, the state VFW department. And they selected his essay to represent them in Washington. The young man did not win first prize, but he did walk away with a $1,500 scholarship. So we were really pleased to support that endeavor. Again, thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Mary Elizabeth Oak, also known as Emmy, at 30 Gerena Place, Milford. Wonderful news about basketball game, team of women. I must admit, it was an old sport of mine when I was younger competitively. So it was wonderful to be here to see that. But what I really wanted to say is I am very concerned with what I've read in the paper for the long, that's been going on for the last four months or so, is the sewage going into the sound? I hope it gets resolved and soon, quickly, for the sake of the farmers and also the sake of this town. I do have a concern. I know it's being investigated. But I do wonder, since it must be a substantial amount to make an impact on the far, oyster farmers, that I wonder if there's some development that has an implication on this that has not been correctly done. That's all I want to say. If somebody can fill me in the results, I would be very grateful in case I miss it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the Board can do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Consideration of Minutes. Alderman Paselli.
Agenda Item Three, Consideration of Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Board of Aldermen Held on March 3rd, 2025.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Four, Consideration of Minutes for Special Meeting, Alderman Paselli.
Agenda Item Number Four, Consideration of Minutes of the Special Meeting Held on March 26th, 2025.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Report and Recommendations. I just want to thank, personally thank Bill Cates and members of the American Legion for the amount of work this committee put together. It was a fantastic, fantastic ceremony. And everybody really, really appreciates all the hard work you put into it. Item Number Six is the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the members of the Board. It's great to be back in City Hall and welcome to the residents that are here. We appreciate your attendance as well. I would also like to thank the people that attended the 50th anniversary, the Welcome Home Event for the Vietnam Veterans. Fifty years. I want to thank the residents that attended. We had veterans that came here from all over the state. It was a premier event and it was, it was well-attended. We had a function at Parsons at the Vietnam, well, the Veterans Memorial Auditorium afterwards, which was very heartfelt. I presented a proclamation to 11 Vietnam veterans that weren't able to come home to Milford, but their families were there to receive the proclamations in their honor. Also, I was fortunate enough to attend East Shore and West Shore, or East Shore and Harborside Middle Schools had plays this weekend, Saturday. One was the Beetlejuice Play that I attended. That was at Foreign High School. And Alice in Wonderland was at Jonathan Law. And they were put on by the East Shore and Harborside Middle Schools. And it was a great, great play. The costumes were amazing. And we have a lot of talent here in the city. You'd be surprised. So if you ever have a chance to attend a play, please do. We also announced the tree giveaway in George Amato's honor. George was a public servant for the City of Milford. He served on the Board of Aldermen. He was a veteran. He was an artist. He was somebody that gave back to the community. So if you'd like to reserve a tree in his honor, you can go on our website. We'll be giving the trees away Saturday, April 26th, at Eisenhower Park. And on Sunday, April 27th, the Rape Crisis Center will host its annual Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event at Listiman Landing. That's always a well-attended event. So I would encourage you to please attend. And the Board of Aldermen budget process begins on Thursday, April 10th, this month, at 6:00 PM, with the Board of Aldermen Public Hearing. So I look forward to hearing from our constituents. And once again, congratulations to the UConn Women's Basketball Team. We were able to livestream and broadcast the game. It was the first-ever community watch party at the Veterans Memorial Auditorium. And that was also well-attended. So we're so, so thankful, so happy that they were able to win. I believe this is their 12th championship. And also, I'd also like to bring attention to our new website that we've been working on. Emma in my office has been working on this for over a year. And it's been launched. And I encourage you to check it out. And it's really, it's really a great, great website. And I think it's gonna serve the public very well. And last but not least, this month is Poetry Month. I presented a proclamation at the Milford Arts Council at the Firehouse today to acknowledge Poetry Month. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully request consideration on Items 8A through 8I on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Unfinished Business. There is none. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, New Business. Alderman Paselli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda Item 8A, Board of Aldermen Approval is hereby requested for the appointment of Matthew Schwartz, 24 Albert Street, as a member of the Police Commission, term to expire 12/31/26.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah. Is Mr. Schwartz in the audience this evening? Please come to the head of the auditorium to be sworn in by our city clerk.
Do you solemnly swear and sincerely affirm that you will faithfully execute and discharge your duties and responsibilities according to laws and members of the Milford Police Commission of the City of Milford to the best of your abilities. So help you God or upon penalty for torture.
I do.
Congratulations.
Next item on our agenda is 8B, Alderman Paselli.
Agenda Item 8B, Board of Aldermen Approval has requested for the attached allocation transfer number one, Fund 6018, fund balance unreserved, golf course open space, golf course open space, golf course maintenance irrigation system.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Federico.
Mr. Chairman, thank you through you to the Finance Director. Can, can you just explain what the golf course open space expense would normally be used for, the one that's being transferred?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Federico. Historically and normally, I would say the, this account or this fund is used for operation and maintenance of the nine-hole golf course and also maintenance of the city's open space property or properties. And I know in the past it has been used at least once to help to purchase open space in the City of Milford.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Alderman Smith, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to the Finance Director. Can I just ask, and maybe I missed it there, this $360,000 that's coming from the golf course open space, what's the source of those funds? Where do they come from?
The source of those funds is an annual payment from the golf course itself, from the management company. It's a certain percentage of the fees that the golf course collects, the greens' fees. And on average, I think it's, it started out, it's close to 10%. And it's subject to change as the Golf Course Commission renews the agreement on a periodic basis.
And if I could continue, Mr. Chairman, is this the first time that these funds have been used for the golf course, the funds that they have paid into the open space and not being used for the golf course? Is this the first time we've done that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Smith, no, it is not the first time.
So on a periodic basis, they've been paying in these funds and then when they have a need at the golf course, they ask for it? And, and these funds are paid out of, do you guys keep like an open, an account that says this is the golf course account?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Smith, yes. We segregate these annual payments into a special account. It's called the Golf Course Open Space Account. And it is kept separate and managed separately on an annual basis. I will also add that the stipulations of the account require that the expenditures be recommended by the mayor to the Board of Aldermen. And as you mentioned, it's usually the case that the Golf Course Commission itself makes or has made recommendations to the mayor and previous mayors in the past.
And then the last one, Mr. Chairman, the $130,000 from the unreserved fund balance? What's the source of that and why is that there?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Smith, the source of that comes from the Golf Course Enterprise Fund, the Fund 18 itself. As you know, this board sets its annual budget each year. And as they collect these revenues to fund the expenditures to operate the golf course, there is often a surplus at the end of the year and that goes into the Fund 18's fund balance. And this is where the $130,000 is coming from.
Thank you. I just had to follow up on that one. So the entire $130,000 there is being funded from fees that came from the golf course?
Yes, that's correct. Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Paselli, Agenda Item Number 8C.
Agenda Item 8C, Board of Aldermen Approval is requested for the attached easement at 0 Rivers Street per the attached recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission dated March 19th, 2025, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 8-24.
Second.
And, excuse me, and authorize the mayor and city attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said agreement.
Now I'm gonna second it. Can I have a second on that motion?
I did it twice.
Motion was made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Marlowe.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm not sure if it should go to the mayor or the city attorney. I just could explain a little bit about this easement, what it is exactly that is being asked for in this.
I can do one better. Through you, Mr. Chair, I actually have, we have here this evening Attorney Jody Driscoll from Harris Beach Murtha, representing the United Illuminating Company. And I think if she wouldn't mind coming forward, she can give you a better explanation. You'll note there are actually three different items on the agenda with three different utility easements that are being sought this evening. So I think Attorney Driscoll would like to address all three in her presentation. And certainly she's available to answer questions individually as to the three as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board of Aldermen. I'm Jody Driscoll. I'm an attorney at Harris Beach Murtha, and we represent the United Illuminating Company. We have gone before your Planning and Zoning Board and presented on this matter. For a little bit of background, back in February of 2022, the United Illuminating filed an application with the Connecticut Siting Council for issuance of a certificate of environmental compatibility and public of a certificate of environmental uh, compatibility and public need in connection with the Milvan to West River Railroad Transmission Line One Fifteen KV Rebuild Project. And that was approved in August of two thousand twenty-two. This is part of a long-term project for um, upgrading uh, and relocating electrical transmission facilities along the Connecticut Department of Transportation Corridor that runs uh, through Fairfield and New Haven Counties and, and through the City of Milford. Uh, this project consists of relocating and rebuilding the existing uh, one fifteen kilovolt overhead transmission lines. It's about nine point five miles uh, within the CDOT Metro North Railroad, Railroad Corridor in Milford, Orange, West Haven and New Haven. Uh, what's, what will take place during this project is that UI owned, has these uh, bonnets that are fastened, fastened on top of the rail um, road catenary structures. If you've ever noticed them, that's where the transmission lines run through. Uh, these lines have been there for a very long period of time and need to be replaced. Uh, so what will be done is new independent double-circuit self-supporting steel monopoles will be installed along the railroad track line, mostly within CDOT property. Uh, the City of Milford, as well as all of the other towns and cities, as part of this project have been um, providing input on this project for many years and UI has been consulting with your mayors, prior mayors, as well as various departments and officials over the past few years. Uh, these new structures will be located within CDOT property, uh, but there are certain instances where they need to be located uh, in private property as well as city property. And these are temporary and/or permanent easement rights. Um, and like in the cities of West Haven and New Haven, UI is seeking easements from the City of Milford to commence construction of the last segment. So they've already started this project and this particular segment is the last segment to be constructed. Uh, so we're requesting three easements this evening. Um, if I'm going in order of your agenda easement, the first one is Zero River Road here in, in Milford, uh, which is a portion of your train station parking lot. Uh, they are seeking a permanent easement right over zero point zero 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 one acres, so a very, very small portion of your property. Um, and that is for the purpose of blowout. So these new lines that they're installing, um, and they, my team from UI can explain the technical parts better than I can, but these new lines to meet the safety standards, they need to have the ability to sway. Um, so you, we are not putting any poles on your property, instead the lines will be located and potentially could sway over City of Milford property because of, of the weight and the, and the movement that they will have. So the permanent easement rights are to allow those lines to be able to sway over your property and to trim back certain trees to make sure those lines are safe. We don't want those lines or trees catching on fire. Uh, so this is really just an ability for those lines to sway. And again, no structures on your railroad um, property, that, that's Zero River Street. They're also seeking temporary rights over a zero point zero four acre portion of the parking lot. Uh, this will occupy a few of the parking spaces in the parking lot. Um, but again, no permanent structures going there. This is solely for the purpose of allowing UI to put down a work pad so that they can get to Structure Nine Twelve, which is located on CDOT property. Um, there will be matting and drilling and pouring of foundations on the adjacent property and this is really just for them to be able to do that work and do it in a safe and secure manner for both the workers that UI will be uh, using to do this project as well as the residents of Milford and any visitors who utilize your train station. Uh, this work will take place over several months. Um, however, it will not be a consecutive, a long consecutive period of time. They're expecting to do drilling and pouring again on the CDOT property in June of two thousand twenty-five. They expect that this will require about a ten-day closure of your, of a portion of the road where the train station is located. Um, and then there'll also be a few days at a separate period of time when they're installing the pole again on CDOT property. Um, but they will need access again for a few days. So um, it will be inconsecutive periods of time over the course of very, of various months while they're doing this related work. Uh, and just uh, to give you a little bit of comfort, I know this is your train station parking lot, uh, the United Illuminating has recently worked with the City of West Haven to do similar work at their train station property. They coordinated with the uh, police department as well as the train station operator to make sure the work was done in a manner that minimizes the impact to those operations and to make sure that the public, the visitors and the workers are um, you know, safe conditions. Uh, this work will, as I said, take place over several months. It's expected to be six to eight months, um, but the disturbance would not be for more than six inconsecutive weeks. Again, it will be stops and starts depending on the staging of the project that will run throughout the City of Milford. And I do have copies, if anybody's interested, I have large-scale copies of the easement area. We can pass around if you'd like. Are there any questions on that particular easement or should I move on to explain the
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I know there's a, a few questions, but uh, one in particular is, is, do you uh, or does the UI restore everything to as it was when it started? And um, I'm assuming that's the case.
They do. They do have restoration efforts uh, that they will implement. If you have specific questions related to restoration, I can uh, turn to one of my clients to explain, but they do restore property to the condition that they found it in. They're, they don't always make it better than they found it, but they do at least restore it to the condition that they found it in.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just follow up just uh, quickly. Uh, so do you work with the, the Public Works Director, you know, seeing what, what it's like before you start and how it ends up?
So I personally don't, as I mentioned, I'm counsel for United Illuminating, but I would like to uh, maybe bring up the project manager uh, to answer those types of questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Paul Kenley, the project manager for this project um, with UI. Uh, yeah, we, we take pre-construction uh, photographs that help us document what the conditions were beforehand so we can match that um, after construction as best we can.
Thank you. I know there's other questions also.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Arcialo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, I just had a brief question about how tall the towers for the lines are gonna be?
Um, typically throughout this area, our structures are about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five feet tall. There are instances of a couple of structures that are a bit taller to, to, that's required for a longer span. But that's pretty standard.
All right, thank you. Actually, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I was actually hoping to uh, request a five-minute recess if that, so our caucus can discuss.
Do you have anything else to hand out? Do you have anything else to hand out? Or is it?
Um, I just was gonna do each one at a time, just um, and I can look.
Okay.[1123.16]
Aldman Arciallo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you.
We're out of recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I actually just had a quick question about any other local municipalities that are currently resisting this?
Within this particular project?
Yes.
No, this is the last segment. So the city of West Haven, the city of New Haven, has all already granted easements over their property. And in fact, as we were talking during your break, the city of New Haven granted an easement that allowed UI to install a pole on one of their parcels. And just to clarify, there are no poles being asked for on any of the City of Milford parcels. All of the easements that we're asking for tonight are to be able to access lines or to have the lines, you know, the overhead lines, be able to sway over onto city property. But there will be no permanent structures on any of the three easements areas that we're asking for this evening.
Okay, there's no permanent structures on that. I understand that there was a little, was there an issue between the city of Fairfield and United Illuminating?
That's a different project, correct? Different project.
That's...
A different project.
Of the, is it the...
This is the Milvan to, I'm sorry, get the proper term. This is Milvan to West River Rail Transmission Line Project. And there's, the city of, town of Fairfield is not part of this project.
Okay, but it's not the same structures in that, in Fairfield?
It is a totally separate project. I don't know if you want to talk to that.
Yeah, it would, and I'm not the project manager for that project. But it would be the same concept of structures being installed and removal of the existing conductors off the bonnets. But that, that was going through this Connecticut Siding Council process. And there was some petitions raised by the city of Fairfield and others. We, like Jody mentioned in the very beginning, went through the Connecticut Siding Council process and were approved back in 2022 to do the full project as is. And so everything in front of you that we're proposing was proposed that way as per the approved project with the Connecticut Siding Council.
Okay. And can I ask, I mean, I know you're not the manager for that project, but can I ask what issue Town South of Us maybe add with, with projects like this?
Good night, everyone. I'm Miriam. I am in charge of the land management for the transmission lines. I have been working for the Fairfield to Congress project, not anymore, but because it's a completely separate project, as we have said. But the issue was that, yeah. So the issue on Fairfield to Congress was that while the project was being reviewed by the Siding Council, some of the property owners that had parcels affected by this project weren't willing to collaborate. And they asked UI to revise the design on the project. And we have accommodated what the Siding Council decided. And we are now moving forward with two phases of the project with what was proposed. But well, basically, some of the properties impacted weren't willing to collaborate and grant any rights to UI, and that was the issue.
Aldman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some, I have a question, some follow-ups. Good evening, and thank you for coming. Let's sort of start from the last thing that I heard from you, that there was going to be no structures that...
Correct, that is correct.
Lines were to be tied to. But there has to be existing structures.
So there will be structures, but they will not be located on the City of Milford property.
So there's, right now, there are no existing structures? So how long?
Right now, the structures are located on top of the train line. If you look at the train line above the railroad tracks, there's a structure where the power runs through to run the trains.
So you're using the existing structures?
So on, those are the, there's existing structures above your train tracks right now that go across the train tracks and they give power to the train lines. On the ends of those, you know, if you look at it, almost as like a box that goes over the train lines at the, oh, and he has pictures. At the, on top of those ends are these, these structures called bonnets. And the power lines run through the bonnets.
So what's the distance? How much distance between those structures is this line going to waver and sway?
If we could see that paper as well, that would be helpful. Aldman Vitale.
So the transmission line, more than likely, will never sway onto the city's property. But we need a certain distance away from the existing, the proposed location of the line to meet safety standards. So, so it's basically just, you know, this, this, really nothing's going to happen in this easement. It's called aerial rights. And, you know, in the future, it really don't, it won't be impacted at all in any way.
Okay. So now we'll start at the beginning. That was the last thing I heard. What is the difference between a temporary easement and a permanent easement? We'll start off that way.
So your city attorney can explain that to you as she represents you. But what I can tell you this evening is, United Illuminating is asking for temporary rights, which are rights that are only for a certain period of time. And those rights will only be for that period of time.
So it's a time, it's a time...
It's a time issue, not a property issue? Where the permanent easement rights will go on indefinitely.
So if we're saying that you made a comparison of 00.01 and 00.04, movement of the cable as opposed, so where, could you explain that one more time, please?
So the difference that I was, what I was mentioning earlier is there's a portion of your property, the 0 point, let me get, make sure I have it correct here for the record. 0.001 is the permanent easement area. If you look at the maps that we passed out, it is a very small sliver of land at the bottom, right along the road. And that's the area where UI is looking for permanent rights so they can trim trees, they could access the lines if they ever need to do any repairs. And if that sway were to happen, we don't think it's necessary, but because of regulation, we have to have certain amount of room on either side of the line to allow for potential sway or potential heat impact. And so that's the reason for that 0.001.
Can you interpret that 00.1 as to, give us a visual? Is it two, three feet? Is it a mile? No, but... Right. Nobody, building can be raised, so it's your rights. But for everybody to hear this, I'm confused. If you have a line swaying 00.1, what does that mean? Is it this far?
So, yeah.
Well, it won't be far, but what is it? There's got to be a calculation for 00.0...
So, Miriam, just come back for one second. So the line is actually not going over your property. The line is going over the C dot property. But there's a potential need for it to move.
Okay.
Right? So that's what we're looking for, that sliver. You have, I passed out my map, so I don't have any left in front of me. If I could borrow yours. And I don't, it's not to scale, but it would, I think it's one, I think if I'm reading this correctly, and again, the print is very small and it's late in the day, I believe it's one foot.
One foot?
I believe so.
That it would sway?
I believe so. Is that, well, it could sway further, but it will only sway one foot onto your property.
Right.
I don't want you to think it's only going to sway a foot.
So if it sways, if it's in the middle, it sways one foot on one side, it's got to be congruent with swaying on the other side, unless...
Right, right.
Okay. So the point is, it's a foot of, it's a foot, that my point is getting at, is now you need an easement. What is the amount of distance land use to get maintenance into that area, to maybe fix, to, to maintain those cables? I mean, it's got to be, a truck needs to go through or something, so...
Well, it's primarily within the public right of way, the railroad avenue. This is a small strip along the edge of railroad avenue that they may need to have access to in addition to the public right of way.
So all of this 0.1, 0.1, 0.4, what is the UI company investing as far as money to Milford? Are you paying for this?
There will be a fee paid to the City of Milford. The City of Milford's assessor has reviewed the records and came up with a value, which they've presented to... Yeah, which they've presented to United Illuminating, which they agreed to. For this particular easement...
When you say this particular, is it 8C?
There's three, correct? 8C, we're talking about West River. It's $12,304.
$12,300?
And $4. And that number was derived at, by a formula that your assessor put forward.
And the other properties or the easements?
Okay, so then we have, the next one that we will be talking about is Old Gate, Zero Old Gate. That is for temporary access only, and that's a $2,000 value. Again, it's temporary access for a short period of time. And the third easement that we're bringing forth tonight is for a 0.029 acre parcel, a portion of Prospect, Zero Prospect Street. And that value is $31,346. And again, these numbers were derived at by a formula that your assessor put forward.
Now, when that payment is given for that easement, is you, does UI own that property? Or does the city own the property? Are you renting that?
UI will have either temporary or permanent rights to that portion of the property. It doesn't mean the entire property, just the portion that is being granted by way of that instrument.
And, and I think this is going to probably come up later on in discussion, but what is the electromagnetic effect of that particular cable coming into? And how large is that cable coming into? And how far an area is that going to be affected?
So Paul, I don't know if you can speak to the specifics on that, but I will tell you that there was part of the application for the Siding Council that went forward. These studies were done. This was all presented to the Siding Council. And again, that was back in February of 2022. And in August of 2022, the Siding Council approved this permit.
So it's within safety limits? And I don't know what those are at this point, but I have to take it from you that it's safe? You know, you're going to be very close to buildings, residential?
Right. Well, there's, there's, for the most part, the line on the catenaries, as is currently, is closer to the ground than the structures that we're putting in. So the lines will be an increased distance away from most structures, people than it currently sits now. Although it is closer, sorry, further from the tracks, it is higher up. And for the most part, you know, either situation, it does meet the standards that are required of EMF. And we did a full study on this, submitted to the CSC as part of the Connecticut Siding Council. It's part of that application process is to investigate and review.
So as far as the field is concerned, you can't tell us what the effect is as far as how, how far out it will travel?
I can't right now. We did have engineers that took a look at that and...
Was that a concern with any other towns at all?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Aldman Federico.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to our guests. Couple of questions. The payment amounts that you quoted, are those annual or one-time?
It's a one-time fee. Uh, yes, one-time fee.
The temporary one says annual.
Temporary will be annual, $2,000 per year during the term.
Okay, got it. And then the map helps somewhat, and the descriptions that you just gave help somewhat. But I'm trying to visualize. So, you know, in Milford, our residents love our downtown green, our downtown area with our shops and restaurants and everything. If I'm in those areas, when these changes are made, how different is it going to look? Like you quoted a height of the, of 100 to 125 feet. What's the height of what's there now? And just the overall structure, will it change the look of downtown?
So there was a handout that was passed around to show you what the structures look like today. Do we have anything to show what the structures will look like in the future?
Right, so I think the best way to explain this is, you know, there are, we are putting them in. They're in, we've installed like 40, 50 of these structures in West Haven, New Haven.
In Orange.
In Orange, yep. It is, you know, taller, like I think you're saying, the current bonnets are 60, 70 feet tall.
Okay, so this is double, roughly?
Less than that, but yeah, it's, it's, I guess, not all of our structures are 120 feet. Yeah. Sorry, I don't have this information. But it is actually, the structure heights are laid out in our application to the CSC. We came up with D and M plans and submitted those to the Connecticut Siding Council.
So the, I'm sorry, so the heights went to the Connecticut Siding Council?
Yes.
We don't have them anywhere?
Well, they're for everyone to access on the Connecticut Siding Council's website. And there was visualization studies as part of that application that are in there as well that identifies some key locations and what the change would look like from different viewpoints.
And wasn't, wasn't the city invited to comment on those, when the process was...
Yeah, the CSC process is very open and, you know, it's a long process. A lot of work on our behalf goes into it to produce the engineering ports that go for EMF, the viewpoints, visualizations, other studies that we do are part of, are part of the approval process.
So I fully understand that you don't put together my, my meeting packet.
Yes.
But not having that, and I understand it's transparent, but, you know, we're talking and we're learning about this now and not having been able to see that in advance, I think it makes it a little hard for me to say yes to this tonight.
Yeah, and I apologize, I apologize if there was materials that you feel like you're missing, but the project has been approved by the Connecticut Siding Council and the City of Milford was invited many years ago, and that was submitted back in 2022, so over three years ago, to be part of that process. And they were. I know former mayor Ben Blake was part of the process, as well as various department heads, inland and wetlands were part of the review. So the reason why we did not bring those materials with us this evening is we were here only asking for these temporary or permanent rights, which have already been recommended by your Planning and Zoning Commission as it was within the plan of zoning for the City of Milford. So we did not think that information was anything that was part of what you'd be asking for tonight. We were anticipating, wanting to see where the areas were, what the types of rights were, how much we were paying for them, as the project design has already been approved and the City of Milford previously had input on that. So that is why we did not include that in the plan this evening. But we understand why you would have questions and visuals probably would have been helpful.
Okay, I appreciate that. And so just so I'm, I'm clear, I think I've heard you say the, the two permanent easements are just for, just for the line sway?
Yes, and I have different notes for each one. I'm happy to go through each one with you. I just was only talking about the first one because that was, from what I understand, the only motion that had been made yet. But yes, the three easements that we're presenting do not have a pole going on City of Milford property. There will be poles in the City of Milford, to be clear, but not on property owned by the City of Milford.
Understood, okay. And if we were to table this, I'm looking to you or the city attorney, if we were to table this until our next meeting, what would be, would there be a detriment? So we could take a chance, get a chance to look at the visuals?
Yep, you know, our project schedule is, is moving very quickly. You know, I don't want to hinder your process, but we would ask that we try to come up with a resolution as fast as possible. Like I think it was mentioned, we're trying to get into the, start drilling and pouring foundations in the train station, the Milford train station in June. So it's coming up very fast.
And just clarify, the foundations would not be on the city property. It's on adjacent property, but we would need access to that property to do that work on the adjacent property.
Okay, thank you very much.
Aldman Sully.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Attorney Driscoll. Thank you for being here today to answer some of our questions. And I think, you know, as is evident from some of the discussions going on here, at least some of us are concerned about this. Certainly, I, I think that the fact that this had been a process that's been going on for a number of years might make this end process seem like a group of people just saying, yeah, we know this has been happening, we're just going to move forward with it. But I think each group that has a chance to hear what goes on, and certainly this group, may not have been part of those processes. So when we're being asked to consider, you know, these, these types of matters, the more information we have before us, the more complete the presentation, the fact that there might be a package we could go through in advance or even here, but it may be not enough time to go through everything the way we might like, to ask the proper questions when we have a meeting with, with the UI and/or the city attorney, even in advance of the meeting, would be, would be useful. So I just want to make that point, that it's not necessarily an attempt to stymie the process, but I think there's a lot of, a lot of questions.
We do not mean any disrespect by that. We wanted to just explain the process.
Thank you. And just to follow up, you, you said a number of times, three easements, and you are referring to each one, A, C, D, and E, being a separate easement, not three within one, correct? Okay. Yeah, okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can speak to all three as we're talking now, or I can wait till you make the motion to talk about the other two, whatever your preference.
Waiting on all, all three of them at once.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're going to have to go through the same thing all three times.
Okay.
Aldman Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the city attorney. As we're listening to this and we're hearing about the process that has been conducted by other municipalities as well as here, and the Planning and Zoning Board, which has expertise and has dealt with these matters in the past and along with your office, you have reviewed the easement contracts and you, your office is familiar with the history of this. Do you know of any negative feedback from other municipalities? And is it consistent with decisions that have been made by, by others and by planning and zoning, that this is an administrative matter for this board and that they've looked at these issues previously?
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I can remember your questions. So, so have we heard from other municipalities with respect to these particular easements?
So, so have we heard from other municipalities with respect to these particular easements? We have not. As has already been stated, this project has been approved by the Siding Council some years ago, three years ago. So the process that's before you now is part of the 824 process where certain requirements need to be met in order for the temporary and permanent easements to be in place. And obviously, the first step in that process was with the Planning and Zoning Board, which did approve this unanimously, I believe, and, and these are standards. So after they've been vetted through the Siding Council and once they're approved, that's when they come before the city to say, you know, sometimes they need the easement for a permanent structure. In this instance, it's, it's really, the way I'm understanding it and the way it's been explained tonight, is just for aerial rights. But obviously, they can't come in with drones and helicopters, they need to access through the city property, through land, in order to access that aerial right. That would be for the permanent easements, and then for the temporary easements, it's my understanding, they just need to access city property in order to reach onto private property where other lines and, and structures might be. So I, I hope I answered your questions. I believe the two were whether we have heard from other municipalities on this, we have not, and whether this is standard course for an 824 process, it is.
Thank you. And then to Attorney Driscoll, or UI representatives, there was the question in terms of the infrastructure that's currently there, and they said a height of 70 feet, and we're asking the question about what this was gonna look at. So some folks seem to be concerned about the aesthetics of what, what the appearance might be, what the impacts might be, that you've heard in terms of some of the questions. And I'm surprised that we can't get a definitive answer in terms of what the height will be. We know what's there now, your UI representative said it's 70 feet, and it's going to be higher, but why don't we know how much higher that's going, going to be? If this is an ongoing process and under construction in other municipal jurisdictions, can you clarify something further there?
And I think what Mr. Kenline was saying, and I think, oh, he couldn't give you a definitive, is that not every height will be the exact same, as it depends on location to location, and the length between, length between lines. Some poles need to be higher to accommodate longer stretches of line. So there's not a consistent height. Right now, there is a consistent height because it's built on top of the, the structures that go over the rail corridor. Those are bonnets, as we were mentioning, that were installed on top of those structures. So whatever those structures are, is what we had to work with and we had to build on top of that. But these will vary depending on the topography, the length of line between pole to pole. And Paul, if I missed anything, feel free to.
Yes, and, sorry, I didn't come prepared with that information, but like I mentioned, it's, most of that, some of those details are on our project website, but it's 100% in resources that we've, documents that we've submitted to the Connecticut Siding Council, which is for everyone to view online. But apologies, I didn't bring it tonight. But, you know, like, like it was mentioned, it's, it's, you know, difficult to remember all of them going through the, the corridor. We are installing over 158 structures as part of this project in nine miles, nine and a half miles.
Is it possible a design modification if the plan was not accepted?
Can I just get clarification on what you mean, the plan is not accepted?
Well, if the, the board voted not to approve this this evening, or even tabled it, and they're looking for additional information, it sounds to me that, you know, some have concerns about what the structures are physically going to look at. That seems to be more of an aesthetic issue. And now you're talking about an approved, you know, project at the state level, and, you know, so trying to make a modification to something that's previously been approved by the state and by our local zoning commission, I'm not sure what the outcome could be.
And I am not counsel for permitting purposes with the Siding Council, so I can't speak tonight to what impacts it would be, but I believe it would have to go back before the Connecticut Siding Council, as they're the ones with jurisdiction over those plans.
Yeah, I'm just trying to assess, Mr. Chairman, back to the city attorney, you know, our decision, you know, this evening, and, you know, what, what impact it could have on the overall project and what the net outcome might be. But if we could take a five-minute recess to discuss that further?
Did you, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, did you want me to just maybe respond to that quickly before you do? I, I think the important thing to remember is the project has already been approved, the project is happening, and I, it's my understanding, we're the last leg of the project. So the structures on private property within the city are being built, the structures on either side of these, in other towns have already been built or are being built. So what's before you is an approval on the structure itself, sightliness or unsightliness of whatever the, the structures may be on other property, it's just access to city property so that this approved project can continue.
That's, that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Beatty.
Through you, Chair Harrison Vitro, thank you. I, I just want to clarify a few things. It reiterates some of what has been said already, but it's difficult to examine this and think about it without being able to visualize it. Just the one-page position paper that used the vernacular bonnets would have helped me to picture it, you know, there's something there. And the issue about the height, and it bothers me, I don't know whose fault it is, I don't mean to sound crabby, but if that went to one person, then it has to pass down to all of us. It really was information that was needed before this, as was the longer sheet. And I was listening intently. This is not pro forma, I, I want to say that. My understanding as a member of this board is that we have the legislative authority and the approval. So yes, of course, it's been screened and planning and zoning passed it on, and we have respect for their work, but it's not approved as a project until it's approved here. So our questions aren't intended to be anything but our responsibility. And other towns and other councils, other select boards have different authority than this town. So having gone through a project and get approved through the specifications up to this point, and still, we're struggling to do this. So, and I think the question is, what will happen, is the intention is not to hold it up, the intention is just to do due diligence, but I, I for one, didn't have enough information to understand it. I was writing down and very, very interested, and I was waiting for you to get to the third easement, because you went through the first two.
Actually, I only went through one. Sorry, I interrupted you, we only went through one.
So then, then I, you know, so in, in the discussion, so that is my.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for putting up with our questions this evening. But I have a question that, hypothetical, the Siding Commission has gone, gone through the Siding Commission, it's gone through PNC, and you're looking for our permission. The hypothetical would be, what happens if we vote this down? You really need our vote? You really need to come to this body with the information that you have? Or do you have the right to do and supersede what we have to do here tonight?
So we like to work with municipalities and residents in an amicable manner, but the United Illuminating does have powers of eminent domain.
So it becomes a moot point, that you really don't need our permission to do it.
We would really like your permission.
Absolutely, you would like, you know, the, the idea of we all being on, on board with the issue, but if this board votes it down, we, we're gonna do it anyway. So I don't even know, sometimes I wonder why it comes only for the appearance of working together and being amenable to the project, but this board has a very difficult decision to make, to other than to vote yes for this, is, is, is in my view, a, 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 a situation that is unnecessary. So thank you, but thank you for your time and everything, but I just hope it works out, thank you.
Alderman Arquillo.
Actually, I was gonna make a motion, but I think Alderman Smith might have a few questions, so I'd like to see it too.
I would appreciate that, but just one, actually, Mr. Chairman, as I told you, I have a really lot of questions, but I, but I have one that kind of ties into this, which was on the materials that were presented to us, and I tried to go through and figure some things out. I couldn't tell if you were building poles or buildings, and I realize here tonight, you've said you aren't, but that's new to me. I couldn't tell from the materials we got if you were gonna be building a structure or what you were gonna be doing. And there was nothing here that would indicate that you weren't doing that. And I would appreciate an opportunity, I think, for, until our next meeting, to, to get a clearer picture of what's going on here, and maybe even some of these questions that I, I talked to the chairman and majority leader briefly about, about insurances and reverter interests, and remediation afterwards, and screening during construction, and that kind of thing, answered by either the city attorney's office or maybe even discussion with you all in the next 30 days. I think a lot's been, been put down here, and I, I, I think we would do well to have another time period to, to look at that. And, and I happen to know from other experience that all other approvals haven't been obtained, all other property owners have not consented. This is a process that is ongoing. And so I think, I, I don't think there's a deadline of we have to, we don't have until next month. I, I think we, I think we do.
Make a motion to recess.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, if, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call for a five-minute recess. Thank you.
We're back in session. Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to move the question.
Let's just vote.
Second?
Good. Now, vote on the motion the way it is. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Ask the motion to move the question.
Ask to move the question.
We gonna vote?
Roll call vote, Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Arquillo?
No.
Alderman Beatty?
No.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Federico?
No.
Alderman Fowler?
Yes.
Alderman Healy? Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Morenne?
No.
Alderman Piselli?
No.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis? Eight no, seven yes. Eight no, seven yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Secretary.
Eight no, seven yes.
Eight no, seven yes. The motion fails.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Archeola?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'd actually like to make a motion to postpone Agenda Items C, D, and E until we have adequate time to look at everything. And this is no bearing on you guys, of course, and this is not a no on the project, but I don't feel like we have adequate information to have a full understanding of the project. And I understand that there are resources available online that would be very valuable to us, but we weren't aware of that until just now. So I'd like to make a motion to table Agenda Items C, D, and E until our May meeting.
Just a point of clarification, wasn't motion C already, shouldn't it fail? Can that be?
No.
We have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? Motion on the floor and a second to postpone it till next month? Alderman Archeola?
Yes.
Everyone hear the motion?
That's the postpone.
Any discussion on the motion?
That's the postpone eight Agenda Items eight C, eight D, and eight E.
All three.
Thank you.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes, just in regards to postponing, I'm not in favor of postponing it. What I would like to know is, is there a specific list of information that everyone is looking for that's going to make, you know, is going to help them decide? Is that something that's been put across as to what it is everybody's looking for?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we were told there's a complete set of information on the CSC website, that it's all very transparent, and the full plan is there, and I think I, for one, would like to have the opportunity to go and take a look at that myself. Thank you.
Thanks. Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Bevan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I understand this correctly, whether we vote yes or no, or delay this a month or two months? The actual work could actually start tomorrow?
The work is not scheduled to start tomorrow. And would not start tomorrow without rights.
Thank you very much.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Archeola?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Federico?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
No.
Alderman Healy? Alderman Jenkins?
No.
Alderman Marlowe?
No.
Alderman Morennon?
Yes.
Alderman Piselli?
Yes.
Alderman Smith? Alderman Vitro? Alderman Vitally? Alderman Willis?
Yes.
Eight yes, seven no.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Eight yes, seven no. Motion passes. Alderman Piselli, Agenda Item eight F.
Agenda Item eight F. Board of Alderman approval is requested for the attached resolution regarding Milford Board of Education concerning school construction grant for the esports arena projects at Jonathan Law and Joseph A. Foran High Schools 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Vitally?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, maybe to the Finance Director, Mr. Iridici. Can you tell me that, I know the esports arena was granted or the bonded for approximately 1.1 million dollars, and this grant, do you know, can you tell me how much this grant is for, number one? Number two, does this reduce the bonding, or is this in addition to what the bonding is presenting?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Vitally. I don't have the exact percentage of the state reimbursement, but I know on average the rate has been close to 38%, but again, it varies from project to project and from year to year, and that's calculated by state formula. And your other question about the grant money, it is not in addition to what was approved by the Board of Alderman in the bonding ordinance, it helps to lower the amount that the city has to borrow, but the total cost of the project remains the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Alderman Marlowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the Finance Director. Hi, Peter. Just with this, is each one of these will get a certain percentage, correct, a certain dollar amount, but that dollar amount has to stay within whatever its go-to. So from the esports, let's say there was additional money, and they can't take that from one thing and use it for another like HVAC or whatever, even though it's all part of the same bond package?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Marlowe. As the project stands, if there is state grant reimbursement, the state will be reimbursing for that particular project. And again, as I said earlier, the grant is part of the funding for the total project. So if it's a million dollars and the percentage is 40%, so that 400,000, if you will, is from the state and the remainder from the city through bonding. Now, in terms of transfers, if the project comes under budget and there's money left over in the ordinance, then the city is allowed to transfer to another bonded project. Yes, that's part of the language in the ordinance, but that transfer must be approved by both the Finance Director and the mayor together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitally?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, Peter. Is that why we couldn't divide the question on the bonding because this was one package? And the intent would have been that if one portion of that project came in lower, that we could transfer funds?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Vitally. I'll take a step back from that. I think the issue with dividing the question was more to the fact that the ordinances as they stood were publicly noticed and approved by the Board of Finance, so any change, especially the significant changes we discussed, would have to be go back to the Board of Finance, be re-noticed again, et cetera. And so you would basically be starting the process over again.
Thank you. But initially, if they were separated, if they were given to us individually, you cannot then move monies around.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Aldermen. Again, back to that moving money around, it only pertains to bond ordinances that are already approved. So the transferring relates to bond ordinances already approved. So if they're not approved, then a transfer is not yet applicable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project is so crazy, this thing about putting video arcades into our high school, that I am going to be voting no on this because it is just, it has to, attention has to be called to this. I just, I flabbergasted that our Board of Ed would ask us for it, and that we voted yes on the underlying, and I'm going to be voting no on this because we should not be putting video arcades into our high schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Roll call vote, Mr. Adam Chairman, Madam Secretary, please.
You got a promotion. Oh, you just turned it off.
Alderman Archeola?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Federico?
Yes.
Alderman Fowler?
No.
Alderman Healy?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Morennon?
Yes.
Alderman Piselli?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitally? Alderman Willis? Thirteen yes, two no.
Thirteen yes, two no. Motion passes. Alderman Piselli, Agenda Item eight G.
Agenda Item eight G. Board of Alderman approval is requested for the attached resolution regarding Milford Board of Education concerning school construction grant for HVAC ventilation boiler masonry improvements at various schools 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Piselli, Agenda Item eight H.
Agenda Item eight H. Board of Alderman approval is requested for the attached resolution regarding Milford Board of Education concerning school construction grant for partial roof replacement projects at various schools 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Piselli, Agenda Item eight I.
Agenda Item eight I. Board of Alderman approval is requested for the attached Safe Harbor Marina's membership agreement between SHM Water Club LLC and the City of Milford, and to authorize the mayor, chief of the fire department, and city attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said agreement.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is new business. We have none. Moving on to Agenda Item number 10, memo transfers. Alderman Piselli.
Agenda Item 10, budget memo transfers. Consideration of budget memo transfers, number three. And number four, fund 1,005, 6,036, fiscal year 2025.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item 11, refunds, Alderman Piselli.
Agenda Item 11A, consideration of refunds in the amount of 13,643.35.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item number 12, reports of standing committees. Is there any reports of any standing committees? Alderman Healy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, the Public Safety and Welfare Committee met and undertook two items. One was a sidewalk issue, lien relative to 1081 Nogatuck Avenue, being appealed by the property owner, and a vote was taken to confirm and reject the appeal of the property owner. And the second item was at a wall that had been constructed, a masonry wall on an easement owned by the City of Milford right away at 4-8 Park Avenue, and that was also confirmed and reaffirmed that the wall must be taken down. So those two items were held this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Healy. Any other reports of standing committees? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports of special committees. Any reports of any special committees? Alderman Federico?
I have a report from the Sewer Committee. The Sewer Committee met on March 26th and continued to discuss the search for the source of the contamination in the Walnut Beach area. They're still working on it, and they have some theories that they're working on, but they haven't identified the exact source yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Federico. Is there any other reports of any other special committees? Hearing none. Move on to Agenda Item number 14, executive session. I want to entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
To discuss Items 14A. Joining us in executive session will be the mayor, Tony Giannitazio, the Assistant City Attorney, Deborah Kelly, the Finance Director, Peter Iridici, and Risk Manager, Tony Weeks. Is there a motion? Motion is made and seconded. Go on to executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're in executive session.
So when you're talking about somebody, I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about with the example of, say, a clerical employee that we're referring to. So, and that's why there are two different pools of employees, as well. So because firefighters work a 12-hour schedule, that's what puts them under this FLSA Family Standards Act kind of separate category. Because you can't just look at 40-hour workers, because they may work, you know, 80 hours in a week. But 80 hours one weekend and 20 hours the next, or 24 the next. So, but it's traditional, if you will, clerical employees work 37 and a half hours a week. The Connecticut State Department says anything over 40 hours, you have to pay overtime. And actually, some of our contractors, they say, they hope their staff are working 37 and a half hours, you have to pay overtime. So, I'm not sure of the example you're talking about. I know that there are a lot of people who can't help themselves, volunteering for their own jobs. That's what they have to actually pay them for the hours that they're there. Maybe that's what you're referring to, with the people who try to come in and say, "Well, I'm here to help here. I volunteer. I'm here." You know, "I just want to have help," kind of whatnot. But we're also talking about examples of non-against employees. So, only a certain class of employees are even entitled to overtime. There's a special one like myself. I'm not entitled to overtime. I'm here. Not getting overtime. So, certain classes of employees get that overtime by state law over 40 hours. And others are exempt, and they can receive an extra hour.
I wasn't complaining about not getting overtime. So, I was just using myself as an example. I promise I was not complaining. I'm happy to be here. Yes, I understand. And I apologize for making fun of myself for being here. I was not implying that at all. I was just using myself as an example of a class of employees that needs that.
Absolutely. And that is a difference maker, and especially in a union like the public work union, Where you have some, you know, that are earning without the ability to pay overtime, and others that are. So you have to balance it out, because they're paid in a day, and they're working the same number of hours, you know, like paid in line. So that's definitely something that's a difference maker.
Mr. Chairman, please, the Finance Director. So we're going to ask the CME to approve $400,000. And then the formula is going forward, which is going to be also part of the settlement to the court, to the court. And the expense on that side is that we don't have the active value.
Correct. I know you directed it to here, but I'll take the first line of that, but I'll let him answer about the $400,000. But that's correct, because we're agreeing to a dollar amount, but we, going forward, we don't know what that's going to be. So it's not, it's part of the settlement as far as this is what we agree we will factor in, this is what we agree the formula will be, and what we will pay mathematically. You know, this is how we will do the math, with actual dollar amount, we won't know. So that dollar amount obviously can't be part of the settlement agreement, but certainly that's something that the fire department is going to have to consider.
Appropriate for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? So how does this impact the budget book that I have before me?
Do you, Mr. Chairman, would you like to be answering the question?
Sorry, go ahead. How does this affect the budget book that we have before?
Do you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Federico? I would say it depends on the timing of the payment, what, you know, I would take a careful look at what fiscal year this will be paid out in, of course. And it could possibly be paid out in one fiscal year, that is a possibility. There are a couple of, number of ways to fund this. Obviously, it's a large amount, $400,000. It's not an amount that's budgeted for per se. One approach would be as if the, if we had savings in the other accounts that could cover this through a board of finance, Transfer through a legislative transfer, we would look at that. And if, and if not, then we would have to come back to the board for an additional appropriation, for an allocation transfer Out of the fund balance of the general fund, or the fund balance in our capital non-recurring fund.
Aside from the one-time payment, how about the going forward, if you need to calculate the overtime in our 2025, 2026?
Do you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Federico? I would say, yes, there is a possible impact. The Fire Department, I know, does their best to ask for an appropriate amount each year for overtime. But as you know, it depends on a lot of different factors. And sometimes, well, historically, the amount has not been enough. And I know they've been making progress over recent years to gradually increase the amount. So it would depend on the given year, what the actual overtime is. Obviously, this puts upward pressure on it for revising or correcting the formula, if you will. But then it could be offset through overtime savings, through other mechanisms that the Fire Department has at their disposal to control the overtime thing.
And I can actually just kind of add to that a little bit. You brought it up that the bulk of the reason for such a large amount of overtime with staff is, one of the periods in question that we're talking about was during COVID, When they incurred a lot of overtime. So there were certain individuals that incurred a lot of overtime during that period. And then that's where, as we were coming out of COVID, they had shortages in their staff, so they were not fully staffed. So to fill these, to fill these, you know, they had to require we'd come backwards to the current traditional overtime as well. It's my understanding that they have their full department that worked that overtime as a relevant under the form of overtime that they had in years past. But I know that that's something that, that they can consider, that overtime budgeting here.
Agenda item fourteen A, vote regarding settlement discussion. Michael.